Afternoon everybody, welcome to the November 25th Watershed Planning Commission meeting. I would like to call this meeting to order. We will now take a look at the agenda and the meeting minutes. I will like to call for any modifications to the agenda at this time.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We do have one adjustment to the agenda. We do have an updated tax docket for the tax docket item. So Ryan will go over those changes during that item, but we do have an update to that agenda item that we would like to add to the meeting.
Okay, we will include that then under new business. Thank you. Any other modifications to the agenda? Okay, and then to wrap this into one motion, we also have the meeting minutes attached to the agenda. So if there are any comments, otherwise I will call for a motion to approve the agenda with the small change that Vanessa has mentioned and approved as they've mentioned.
One evening, we do need a motion.
Yep, I'll let me state that one more time. Do we have a motion since I think folks were thinking about the meeting minutes and maybe changes to those? That was a lot in one statement. Do we have a motion to approve the agenda with the modification that Vanessa stated? Docket, the tax docket and approve the meeting minutes as presented. Do we have that motion?
Madam Chair, this is Commissioner Phillips. I will make that motion to approve the minutes with the modifications mentioned.
And the agenda modifications. And we have a second.
Madam Chair, this is Commissioner Phil. I will second that.
All right, Commissioners, I will do roll. Commissioner Weaver.
Aye.
Commissioner Pitt.
Aye.
Commissioner Schmidt.
Aye.
Commissioner Phil.
Aye.
Commissioner Phillips.
Aye.
And Commissioner Casilius.
Aye.
Perfect.
Right, that motion has passed. We can move on to the WMO Administrator Report. Vanessa.
Thank you, Madam Chair and Commissioners. Well, my Administrator Report today is going to be a little bit different. Today is kind of the, what I'm going to call, the end of an era. We do have three of our Commissioners leaving us at the end of this year. Their term limits are up and so moving forward, there's got other things going on. One of them in particular has been with us for a very long time. Commissioner Pitt has actually been with the WPC since its inception of the WMO. So Commissioner Pitt has been with us for a very long time. He's provided a lot of valuable insight into all three generations of our watershed plan. Staff remembers how he helped shape our rules and our initial standards and our initial vision, that most of which we've stuck with till today. Staff noted that his efforts to help us through the 2014 presidential disaster, helping to provide us, you know, some decision-making ideas on how to move forward and how to use our funds to repair some of those damages across the landscape and all kinds of things to that effect. It was a lot of effort there. He's been very instrumental in so many aspects, helping with the cost share program, helping to provide some comments and direction there. And then even serving on a policy committee with the Lower Minnesota River Watershed East recently with that One Watershed, One Plan partnership. So staff absolutely wants to thank Commissioner Pitt for what is almost a lifetime at this point of assistance and support of the WMO. We know obviously, you know, want to retire and move on to greater things in Greater Minnesota, but we really want to thank you for all that you have done. You've certainly been instrumental to us, instrumental to the WMO, and we will miss you. And that's kind of summary of kind of what I wanted to say. But Commissioner Pitt, do you want to have, say a couple of things?
Wait, sure. Thank you very much. That's very kind. Obviously, you are embellishing my contribution. I think some people thought maybe I was actually kind of a pain in the, you know what, sometimes, because a stickler about some things. So I appreciate staff's great job that they've gone and I've worked with, obviously several, you'd be the third manager that I've worked with in terms of the WMO. So it's been really a pleasure. I've learned a lot also, and I hope in some small way at least that I have made a positive contribution. So good luck to the rest of you and don't hesitate to solicit my input on any other positions that come up. And if there's anything else I could be of help, I'd be glad to help the county out. So, thank you.
Commissioner Pitt, I also want to thank Commissioner Weaver and Commissioner Casilius. I know Commissioner Weaver, you've been with us for, since 2017, which is also a pretty long stint. You've certainly, again, with the One Watershed, One Plan Policy Committee, helping us with our last generation plan update. You've obviously jumped in as Chair as well on a couple of occasions here. And you've definitely helped us kind of bridge some of those opportunities between the WMO and the Board of Water and Soil Resources. And we certainly have appreciated you very much as well. And Commissioner Casilius, I know you've been newer and jumping into the WMO during COVID. That's huge to us. It means a lot to us. You have really helped us be that liaison with Cedar Lake Improvement District. Definitely instrumental in helping us with our logo and branding, using all your marketing expertise and knowledge and jumping in at all our community events and really asking great plain language questions. We tend to be very technical. And you've always helped encourage us to speak in a way that really helps us connect on kind of a regular language with most of our residents. So I wasn't sure if either of you wanted to say one or two things, but staff definitely wants you to know how much we appreciate you.
Well, I will just say you weren't kidding that there will be some gaps now. Yeah, I think we'll all need to go back and kind of talk to folks and try to encourage other people to get involved to round out the team here on the, as Commissioners, so we can, we can still have a healthy, healthy set of Commissioners to, I don't know, I would say help you guys along, but you guys do such good work that, that I don't, you don't, you don't really need us. But yeah, I know I'll do my part and hopefully the rest of the Commissioners too will, just to get the word out that we need some folks.
I'm hoping you can hear me. I just wanted to say thank you to everybody. It has been a pleasure to serve with this group. I have learned a ton. I'm not sure that I contributed a ton. The other Commissioners set the bar high, but I really found it really fascinating and I would encourage anybody that was interested in being a Commissioner to step up because it is very interesting and rewarding. Thank you so much.
Well, thank you, all three of you. Staff does have a little like award certificate. We are sending you in the mail. So you shall be receiving that as part of our thanks and appreciation as well. But I did want to take the time today since we have, you know, three wonderful Commissioners. And that's how our term limits run. Our term limits, you know, they're three-year term limits and they kind of come and go in batches. But we definitely wanted to thank you and we feel you provide a very valuable resource. We do value the fact that we are a community and citizen-driven entity. And we really, to us, it's of paramount importance that the voice of the citizens who you represent is really what guides us in our day-to-day work. So, thank you. And with that, I stand for any questions.
All right, any more questions or comments for Vanessa? Okay, sounds like we can move on to our ongoing business. And Scott County SWCD's updates first, Troy.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair and Commissioners. And I'll just add, it's been a pleasure working with all three of you. Virgil, to your comment about being a pain in the, you know what, not at all. We look forward to tough questions being challenged by any Commissioner anytime. I think that makes us a stronger organization and provide more and better information for those policies, decisions that you have to make. So kudos to you and thank you all, all three of you for all your service on this Watershed Commission. So I'll give you my final report, I guess, at least that you'll hear. So this is for November 24. Just summarizing, as you know, over the past months and years, I've been trying to move more towards visual metrics than textual. So you can kind of see how we're tracking with some of our activities. We begin with the tax program, technical assistance and cost share. You can see for a month of November, our numbers are on the downswing. What's attributed to that is just we've made dozens and dozens of payments now, closing out a lot of projects that we've had since that, from the, actually, May period and building through June and July. So we're finally closing those projects out with finalizing payments and with certifying the project implementation. So our next step over the next few months is going to be to get that to bounce back up by doing targeted outreach based on some of the grants, priority areas and funding that we have available. Soil health practices, I would say this is a tribute to the WPC, their interest and their focus on really promoting that soil health as part of the water, Comprehensive Watershed Management Plan. We've done that for the past geez, six, seven years or more, maybe 10, and the results are really starting to show off. I'm not saying every year we're going to hit that 3,000 to 3,500 acre mark on soil practices, but I think as you can see, the trend for the number of acres recovering under soil health has certainly gone in the right direction for us. And that is mirrored as well in the equipment rental program. That's where we provide certain types of farm equipment. That's called no-till planters and no-till cedars that allow producers and other farmers in the county to put their crops in without tilling up their soil. And you can see we've had the highest number of acres since we've been tracking the program. And that's another good sign because a lot of that is related to cover crops and no-till. So not all those acres are actually in the number that you see on the left-hand side. The left-hand side soil practices are only those acres that we provided cost share financial assistance for. So there may be quite a few of the acres in the no-till rental program that are actually not accounted for in those. So that number could be a lot bigger than what we're actually showing. Cost share funds, this is another kind of bright spot. You'll see that we've had, we currently have total awards on the book of over 1.25 million. We've encumbered over 82% of that at this point and we've been working really hard to get those funds spent. And kudos to Ryan and all the staff here that have been working hard to make sure we're focused in the right areas and on the right types of projects. I'll skip down to Clean Water Education Program. The only thing I want to mention there is that we submitted articles. We do at least four or five articles in every issue of the scene. This one did feature our 2024 Conservation Leader who lives on O'Dowd Lake. It's Maxine Hughes. She's going to the state awards banquet where she has been already selected as the area, which is the metro area winner for the Conservation Leader statewide program. And she's in the running for a statewide selection. So we'll keep you posted on that. Let's see, water quality monitoring. So we're pretty much wrapped up with Sand Creek. We did our final round of bi-weekly samples. In total, we collected 240 or so water samples. There was a beaver issue on one of the sites in Sand Creek, so we told the township about that. And now we're just looking at the field data, getting everything entered into the database and making sure we do the proper QA QC before finalizing out that program. Precipitation, move down to that graph. You can see we're starting to get some precipitation in October there, but not enough certainly to bring us out of the super dry spell. Although the most recent rainfall we've had here in the middle part of November has kind of slowed construction down. We have quite a few projects under construction, but hopefully we'll be able to get started back up when these cold temperatures settle back in. But otherwise, I'd say we're still in kind of deficit mode on the precipitation. I'll skip down to subwatershed assessment. So we've completed all the modeling at this point. Chase is now working on the final reports and we should have both the Phase 1 and Phase 2 for Raven Stream to the WMO here shortly. Well, in Conservation Act, we had about seven or eight different applications. So we're rounding out all the application reviews and approvals. We usually see a slug of activity at the end of the year. So developers are looking to get their approvals for other wetland activity and incorporate that into their permits for the county and construction plans for next year. Moving on down, let's skip to buffer law. We continue to do our annual review of buffer compliance. The county is divided into three zones. So we come back around every three years to do compliance inspection. And we keep that, there's a database that is maintained by the State of Minnesota, the Bowser, and we go basically into that database and update the compliance on every parcel that is subject to the buffer law. Next section is just a summary of the new applications that came in that were approved. You can see we had a little over $23,650 worth of new applications since the last WPC meeting and had payments of a little over $2,800. And per the request of the Commission from our last meeting, I've included a report that summarizes groundwater, the DNR Observation Well Monitoring Program results. And I'll have you, Ryan, scoot down to that. So this report, I won't go through it in detail, but it's there for your review at your leisure. It includes a map of where all 19 observation well locations are. Some are nested. So if you see an X number by them, that means there's multiple wells that within the same general vicinity, each of those going into different pieces of our sections of aquifer. The next slide shows the annual precipitation. So it's just for reference, basically, so you can see if, how the precipitation values would or would not necessarily correlate with some of the readings we see in the wells. So that's just mostly for reference. The next page shows the, kind of in a very generic, generalized perspective on what wells or what aquifers each of these wells is tapping. So multiple wells might be tapping in the same aquifer. But the goal of the program, which is run by DNR, is to make sure we have good data on each of the aquifers. And they use this data to help refine and validate their modeling efforts when they do groundwater modeling for things like permitting and water supply planning. So this data here is the 10-year, so if it goes back to October 2014, I'll let you look at kind of the individual ones, but generally we're not seeing any significant change in groundwater levels over the past 10 years. There are, there are bounces, you know, from one year to the next, but overall, we're not seeing any significant trends one way or the other. And then the next slides go through the two-year finding for each individual well. Ignore the noise. Those are, those are wells that have loggers in them. So it's tracking data like every 15 minutes or so. We can kind of clear that up if we wanted to do a lot of the data, like a data modification, but we pretty much just give you the raw data here. So you can see in the two-year trend, you're going to see some changes up, some are down. But if you compare that to the 10-year average, you're not going to see this kind of variability and it's not super significant. We would expect to see some of this variation year to year based on, on a precipitation. So hopefully that information is valuable and provides what you're hoping for. If you have any questions, I'll sit by to try to answer them.
Thank you, Troy.
Madam Chair, this is Commissioner Pitt. Yes, Troy, thank you so much. I know I've been asking for this information and I really, really appreciate it. And it was a lot of extra work for you to put it together. But as Commissioners here, I think we all owe it to our residents here in Scott County to make sure that we are being good stewards of our groundwater. So thank you very much for giving us any.
Absolutely, it's my pleasure.
Any questions for Troy?
Madam Chair and Commissioners, Troy, this is Commissioner Phillips, a quick question. So that goes back about, was it 10 years of data? That looked pretty stable on the one graph. I guess, how far back does the data go? And has there been any major change since inception of when they drilled these wells?
I would have to dig back further to give you a good answer on that, Commissioner Phillips. But I know that the program itself has been in place since I've been here in 2009. And I want to say it's probably been in play for at least 20 years, if not longer. So if we wanted to go back further, we definitely could. But I could certainly have staff look back at a longer period and see if there's any changes when we do that.
Okay, yeah, thanks. I'd be curious if you could go back and see if there's been any major changes. But certainly in the last 10 years, they look pretty stable.
Well, we can do that. Thank you.
Yeah, thanks.
Okay. There are no further questions. We can move on to Ryan with his program updates.
Madam Chair, Commissioners, good afternoon. Just want to start out by reiterating things we've already heard, but really appreciate the Commissioners and all their hard work that you've put in through the years. It's, although Madam Chair had said, you feel like you don't, we don't need you, we do. We really appreciate the guidance that you provide. And it's been, it's been really fun getting to know, you know, each of you and all the contributions you've had. So I just wanted to start out by saying we really appreciate all your dedication and work through the years. So thank you. I don't actually have much for updates today. So the CIP where we're at, Vite, I mentioned at the last meeting, they won. They were the lowest bid at roughly 652,000. And oddly enough, out of the seven projects that we've completed during this effort, when Vite completes this one, they will have completed five of the seven. So they found a niche for our projects and we must have a pretty good relationship if they keep, keep coming back to work with us. I know we have really enjoyed working with Vite and I'm guessing that they won't keep coming back if they didn't enjoy working with us. So looking forward to getting started on it. I think the soonest construction will start would be the first week in December. There's still quite a few things that need to happen from now till then. And with the Thanksgiving holiday coming up, it wouldn't surprise me if we go a little bit further into December. So start date hasn't been set. The pre-con hasn't been set yet, so number of things kind of still need to happen. But that would be the very soonest they would be starting construction. One piece of this, the grant that's associated with the work for this CIP is slightly behind. So we are working with MPAC, MPCA staff. And then also, you know, they're working with EPA staff and trying to get this grant agreement executed. We haven't had any, you know, news updates in the last couple of weeks. So we're kind of crossing our fingers and hoping for the best. We've, staff, we've put together sort of our A, B, and C plan, depending on when, you know, things kind of get moving and executed. So, so we'll see. Obviously, we're hoping we can go with Plan A, but if not, we'll pivot to B and if not, we pivot to C. So hopefully we don't have to go any further than that. So just know that we kind of have a plan in place there, depending on the outcome of that grant. Last update I have is we've been working with the Parks Department at Scott County on a property out in Blakely Township where we were keeping tabs on some ravines and the erosion associated with those ravines. And we've been kind of waiting on some LiDAR data. And so I did get an update from our GS department that depending on how quickly the Parks Department would want to move with doing this LiDAR comparison, we might be able to kind of parcel out a little bit of the data just specifically for those fields. So that's kind of where that project's at. If anyone remembers the Blakely Parks Ravines project that we've been working on, it's kind of been on hold waiting for this LiDAR data. But depending on, you know, how quickly the Parks Department wants to move, they can wait for the larger data to be available. We'll do that. If not, we can kind of pick up where we left off. So with that, I'll stand for any questions.
Thanks, Ryan. Is the Blakely, is that Sand Creek?
So Blakely would be, these ravines lead down to the Minnesota River.
Oh, okay.
And to the Parks Department's credit, they've done quite a number of projects on these properties already. And kind of what they're doing is they just want to make sure they're being good stewards of the land. And if some of these ravines are, you know, eroding at a high rate, they would want to know about it and potentially then look at doing some sort of stabilization. So, so it's been a kind of a fun project. Nothing, this is, you know, the bluffs along the river. So there's nothing, you know, all that different from their property to, you know, adjoining property. So there wasn't anything that kind of really stood out. So we're not anticipating LiDAR will show, you know, big, big changes for these ravines, but you just never know.
Yeah. Okay. Thanks. Other questions for Ryan? Okay, looks like Melissa, you're up next.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just a few updates. So at the October meeting, I had indicated that the following day, Megan and I were going to be presenting to the O'Dowd and Thole Lake residents a public meeting. So we presented at that. It was a really good turnout. There was probably 50 to 60 residents that showed up. We were only supposed to be there for an hour presenting. We were there for two hours because they had so many questions. So it was actually a whole hour worth of questions and they were asking really good things. And then we also received a volunteer to monitor Thole Lake water levels because there hasn't been a monitor, a volunteer to do that for many, many years. So that was a good turnout. I had also created an O'Dowd and Thole Lake survey that we sent out after the meeting. Actually, the association sent it out. The deadline for that was November 15. We received a total of 57 responses. We thought that was pretty good. Last Friday, I created an infographic summary of that. Actually, if I could just share that really quickly, share my screen. The share is not showing up, but I have it open here. I don't know, it's not, well, I guess I won't. I'll just tell you kind of some of the feedback that we received from them is that kind of the two main concerns that they had were water levels and weeds. So kind of the two major concerns are, they want to work on increasing water levels and either aquatic invasive species management and native plant management. And so I'll be working with them kind of on some next steps on how they can move forward. on how they can move forward, at least with, uh, what we can help them with. Um, obviously, lake water level stuff, we cannot help them with. Uh, there were several comments about, you know, they wanted to address the burn maintenance on Blue Bell Circle, um, right away as well. So, um, and they did also, and the other thing I want to mention is they did receive a lot of, um, responses for people who would be willing to volunteer for the association. So I think they're going to have a pretty good start of, um, moving forward with some kind of an association that's going to help them be able to do more to the lake um, than what they're currently able to do now. So the Cedar Lake survey, we did send out postcards to that. Um, there was a little bit of a mix up with the labeling, so I had to resend letters. But, um, that deadline for the Cedar Lake survey to the residents, it has a deadline of December 13th. And so far, we've gotten 100 responses back from Cedar Lake folks. So we're having a really good response rate on that. Um, this week I'll also be doing, uh, a mailing to McMahon Lake residents. It's, you know, definitely a smaller group. And I'll give them the same deadline to get some feedback from them so that we have some kind of input into this next watershed plan on what kind of management strategies we should think about and plan for the lakes. Uh, update on the U of M citizen survey. So, um, the second mailing went out on November 7th. Um, we're scheduled to do one last final mailing, probably the first week of December. Um, so far, we've only received 264 responses out of 1,500. So maybe we, we might think about waiting, you know, another week, um, maybe the second week in December instead. But this is the first time after doing that survey a couple of different times now that we're really getting low response rates. And, um, I'm wondering if just too many surveys have been done, um, over the last year that people just are, are not interested in doing another survey. So we might have to think about how to do that in the future, um, to get kind of those behavioral and barrier kind of responses. The, um, watershed based implementation funding, you know, there was a few different projects that I had submitted that were approved. I'm working on language for the work plan for Ryan to enter, um, the work plan into E-Link. I've got one more write-up left for the Sand Creek Water Quality Assessment and Implementation Plan Update. And then I should be able to give everything to Ryan so we can get those, um, agreements going. And lastly, uh, we were invited by council to attend what they're calling the Twin Cities Water Monitoring and Data Assessment Group uh, meetings on December 17th in St. Paul. Um, so they're inviting different counties in the metro to just talk about, what they're doing for water monitoring, what their water monitoring program is. So I'm putting together just a short PowerPoint presentation. I'll probably talk for five, maybe seven minutes. Uh, I'm going to include stuff such as, um, kind of an overview of what types of resources we're monitoring, like how many streams, how many lakes, uh, what parameters are we monitoring for? Um, they, they're, they're curious to know what kind of an examples of analysis that we're doing with that data. And then how are we sharing that information? So I was working on that PowerPoint this morning. And I'll have it finished up probably by next week sometime. And, um, I'll give a report on how that went, uh, after that meeting. So that's all I have at the moment. And I can stand for any questions if anybody has any.
Thank you, Melissa. Questions for Melissa? Okay, uh, all right, looks like Ryan is pulling up our, um, final levy and budget um, document. So, all right, Vanessa, you're up.
Actually, you skipped a item on the agenda.
Oh, sorry, I saw the other screen move and I was like, okay, here we are. Uh, or watershed plan update, sorry.
Actually, I'm going to share my screen, um, Ryan, if that's okay. Just, this is, this will be.
Sorry, back to Melissa.
This will be quick. Um, but since it is on the agenda, I wanted to share it quick. So this is that milestone sheets that I had put together, um, in September. And I just wanted to share with you where we're at on here. So in your packet, I'll be talking about the public engagement phase one. Um, I did put together a summary that's complete. I am discussing it at this meeting. Um, but in December, I'll be working on a lot of different things. So taking all this input, determining whether we need to, um, change our issue statements or add more, um, and have a meeting with staff to kind of determine, tracking our progress against a plan. Um, so you know, what's working, what isn't working, what do we want to think about changing in this next version? And then state and rural requirements, making sure we make a checklist for that. So we're meeting everything. And then I do plan on scheduling a tech or a technical advisory committee meeting in January to go over all of this information. And I did request, um, to, um, Scott Cody Admin to, um, schedule a board workshop for the end of February to also go through all this issue information, maybe some draft goals, and then kind of an overall prioritization process. So just wanted to quickly show you kind of what the, the next steps of work that's going to be done in, in December and in January. And that's all I had on that.
All right, thank you, Melissa. Okay, any questions on the plan update? All right, now, Ryan, you can bring up the, the document. Thank you. And Vanessa, I'm guessing you're going to walk us through the, um, uh, final levy and budget.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair Commissioners. Everybody's favorite topic is the budget. Um, it is always one of our most critical pieces each year. Uh, our budget really sets what it is we're really able to accomplish, uh, in the following year. Uh, we do strive and have a strong track record of, of staying within our budget. So, uh, we don't take these budgets willy-nilly, we take them very seriously. And so we put a lot of time and effort into it. And when we come to you with our preliminary, uh, levy, uh, we do the best we can with the knowledge we have. Of course, the preliminary levy by law must be set by September 30th. And unfortunately, we don't necessarily always have all the information we need from our grants and so on and so forth. Uh, but we do the best we can. So to see changes between the preliminary levy and the final levy is not uncommon. Uh, so, uh, today I am bringing forward the final levy and budget for the WMO. Uh, the purpose of this is for you as the Watershed Planning Commission to make a recommendation to the board. And, uh, based on that recommendation, the, the board will decide whether to approve, not approve, or modify. Uh, they do take your recommendation incredibly seriously. Uh, they do rely heavily on the WPC to really kind of review and flush out the projects and programs the WMO does from year to year. Making sure that we are aligned with both our plan, our watershed management plan, and our annual work plans that we do each year. So in order to meet those kind of existing obligations in our 2019 to 2026 watershed management plan and our existing grant obligations, uh, we are still can, uh, as staff asking to recommend a net levy increase of 6.8%, which would set the 2025 levy at $1,513,425. So that is the same as the preliminary levy that has not changed. However, the final budget is up slightly at $2,367,700. So what are those changes? And that's really what I'm going to highlight for you this evening. Uh, revenue, uh, revenue projected to increase from 1,883,000 to 2,243,000, 240,000, excuse me. Uh, we honestly just received a lot more accurate data on the status of our existing grants, how much we've actually spent this year versus how much we were projecting and what's coming in the door. Uh, and based upon how that's all shaken out here in the last couple of months, we're actually projecting to have an additional $357,397 of grant funds for next year, which is very helpful. Uh, expenses, uh, are expected to increase a little bit of about $40,500. Uh, couldn't quite zero it out. And that because, that is basically due to three program areas. Um, if it's not in here, it didn't change. So the three areas of change were, uh, the land and water treatment budget. Uh, from the preliminary levy to the final levy, uh, we did update the cost share program based upon remaining grant funds. Um, we had a little bit left over. I tried to pull a little bit more of general levy funds in as much as I could. Um, but, you know, I, I can't quite bring it up too much. Otherwise, we're again dipping too far into our reserves. Uh, the biggest impact, of course, to the land and water treatment budget was really that our bids for Pika Creek came in higher than estimated. We re, we estimated 640,000 after opening the bids, even the lowest bid, um, very responsive bidder, as Ryan has mentioned, uh, but still higher than projected. So now that's coming in at 700,000. Uh, I did try to cut a little bit of our WMO staff time for this program area to kind of help balance the budget. I can't really cut it lower than the bare minimum. The bare minimum is basically what our minimum threshold is just to keep the programs lights on from year to year. Um, anything below 80,000 and even 80,000 might be a tiny bit low uh, based upon what we spent on previous years, but we'll strip it as, as far as I can go. Second program area, uh, was the monitoring program. Uh, this one's, uh, you know, just a, a few, it actually ends up being only about a thousand dollars, but there are a few different changes. Uh, one of them, again, is just a little bit additional program costs for laboratory expenses uh, based upon what we're actually seeing in laboratory expenses for this year. Uh, there is an additional kind of SWAG grant from the MPCA. Uh, it's a monitoring grant, uh, for Cedar Creek. Uh, the SWCD is actually going to apply for that for us on our behalf. Uh, but we do need a little bit of staff time and and so on for that. So uh, there's a thousand dollars there. And then obviously to try to balance that budget again as much as I can, uh, I did reduce the WMO staff time to $8,000. And then the last one, uh, program area change is inventory and assessment. Um, that goes back to that U of M social attitudes survey, as Melissa mentioned. Uh, a lot of work has been done, but not quite maybe as much as we were hoping to get done this year. And so we actually need to push some more of that contract work into next year. So in order to push that additional contract work into next year, I had to raise, uh, the budget for next year. The total contract amount is still the same. We're not changing the total contract amount. It's just, we're now projecting spending more of it next year than we were this year. And then, uh, that brings us down to our fund balance. Uh, we are basically, uh, looking to actually decrease how much fund balance, which is good. We'd love to dip into our fund balance, nothing. That never really happens, but we try to get as close to zero as possible. Um, you can't live on your savings. Um, but, uh, we do obviously carry a fund balance for a reason. Uh, however, fund balance is projected to decrease from $440,000 to about 127,000. Uh, again, that's pretty much offset by those grant funds. Uh, as Ryan mentioned, we are waiting on that Nine Elements Phase Two grant that is sitting in the EPA's in basket to be signed. I did not include that in next year's budget at this point in time because we have not really heard from EPA when and if they're planning on signing it. So until I have confirmation that they're going to sign it and when they're going to sign it, um, I can't really include it in the budget. So once that happens, I'll likely bring forward a budget amendment and, um, adjust these numbers slightly accordingly. But that is, at this point, we're not sure when that will happen. So uh, final thing, uh, just so you kind of understand, what does this mean if you're a resident of Scott County? I throw a lot of numbers at you, but what does that actually mean if I am a homeowner of Scott County living in the WMO? Um, part of that comes from county taxation. Taxation runs how all of our taxes and levies affect the average resident based upon home values and property values and residence. Um, it's really kind of, the tax impact really is what, how, how our budget affects you as, as a resident. Um, the tax rate will actually be a little bit of an increase at point 025%. Um, which means we're still under 1%. Our tax rate is less than 1%. So we're going from point 918 to point 943, again, still under percent. Uh, that 2025 rate is lower than 2022. 2022, uh, we're at 1.1. And 2023, we're at point 977. Um, again, in 2023, the average property value taxpayer saw was actually an increase of $4.06 compared to the 2025 average tax impact of $2.29. So at the end of the day, even though we're asking for a 6.8% increase, which you're actually going to see a change in your levy as your tax bill is probably closer to $2.29 for the average resident within the WMO. So, all that put together, um, I have attached at the bottom a final levy and kind of a budget summary. Uh, if you like Excel spreadsheets, based on, uh, what our revenue is, our revenue areas, and then our expenses based upon program areas. And with that, I stand for any questions?
Thank you, Vanessa. Let's check for questions first. Any questions or comments?
Yes, this is Commissioner Phil, Madam Chair. Just want to thank you all for all the work put in this. It's a tremendous amount of work just looking at this. It's quite impressive and I appreciate it.
Thank you, Commissioner Phil.
Right. Any suggested changes? I kind of want to just ask Virgil and Pam, should we just throw something totally crazy in there just before we go out? Just make some crazy recommendations. Maybe not.
I'm going to play it safe and say, nice job, everyone. I agree with Commissioner Phil. It's a lot of work.
Well, I'm not hearing comments or concerns, so still feel free to bring them up. But I will look for a recommendation that the commission, um, approve as proposed and that the board approve this. So we, we would recommend that the board approve, um, the final levy and budget as proposed.
And Karen, this is Commissioner Pint. I would move that the Watershed Planning Commission recommends to the, uh, board approval of the budget as presented and discussed tonight at the meeting.
Thank you, sir. And do we have a second?
This is Commissioner.
She gets it. That's okay.
All right, Vanessa, you're up.
Oh, so much love tonight. Oh, must be Thanksgiving.
No, that's cool. I'm good. I'm passive. Oh, no problem.
I, I, I will do roll. Uh, Commissioner Weaver.
Hi.
Commissioner Pitt.
Hi.
Commissioner Schmidt.
Hi.
Commissioner Phil.
Hi.
Commissioner Phillips.
Hi.
Commissioner Casilius.
Hi.
Thank you, Commissioners. We really do value your support and your input. And we really do value all of your time and effort. And we will put this to good use.
All right. Yeah, I echo the others. Thanks so much for your hard work on this. Uh, all right, watershed plan phase one update, Melissa.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, in your packets was a kind of summary memo and then a multiple page summary of everything that we did for the phase one public engagement and outreach. Um, it was a lot to read. I don't know if any of you actually had a chance to read it or not. But, um, the memo really summarizes everything, um, very quickly. So we did 24 different meetings and community events trying to get public input with this fourth generation plan. Um, you know, through all the method, methods, we had about 115 different, um, input responses, which is better than we've ever had before. Um, and there was really two kind of groups that came out of this. So the public survey or online survey and the mapping application and all the different community events. We kind of considered, you know, the, the general public input. And then the virtual stakeholder meetings that we had, which I received some really good ideas and input from, was mostly, um, you know, we would consider our technical advisory committee. was mostly, you know, we would consider our technical advisory committee, people that attended those meetings. So this memo really, I kind of put together what I heard as common themes from both groups. And I just like to, for the record, go over those. But so from the public point of view, some of the themes that we heard, what their concern and major issue was, was really concern over our, you know, increased demands on our groundwater supply, especially from businesses that are taking that resource and selling it for profit. So I think it could probably allude to that we had a lot of comments on, you know, the bottling company that went in and was approved and people are very concerned. I think people really came out and gave their input into the survey mostly because of that issue. You know, this, this input period was very different from the last one. You know, we were hearing concerns about, people concerned about increasing drainage and protection of wetlands and more habitat and biodiversity concerns, which is strange because we didn't really hear a lot of that in the last plan update. And like it says here, the impacts of mining. And there was a real strong focus on our groundwater. Groundwater supply, sustainability and groundwater quality from different activities that that could happen in the future in the county. And a lot of comments on more management on aquatic invasive species. And, you know, we have a very limited budget on that because we get that grant money from the Minnesota Legislature, but you know, it's a very limited amount to do aquatic invasive species management. And we do that mainly through those watercraft inspections. And then a lot of people mentioning, you know, increased development and how that's going to impact our groundwater and our surface water. And there was also lots of comments on people want more access to our resources, to, to water bodies and more trails around them as well. So I thought that was really interesting. As far as the virtual stakeholder meetings, only four of those were held. The first two really didn't get any signups. But if you kind of scroll a little bit further, they're running to those kind of more high level concerns was more, you know, the pollutants, the chloride concentration concerns. Really strong comments on groundwater, both public and private sources. A focus on stormwater, you know, the, the maintenance of those and the capacity of some of the areas that are, that are already developed and do they have the capacity of our changing weather patterns? And drainage, so drainage was also concerned with this group as well. So I was seeing some commonalities between both groups. The other thing, if we could scroll just a little bit further, just, okay, right there. So one of the questions that we did ask in the stakeholder meeting was, you know, what are some of the barriers and opportunities that they see to protect our own surface water? One thing that really stood out for me in one of the meetings is a comment made. And it's the one, two, three, the fifth bullet point down there is that we have this lack of urgency. That we're not really in crisis mode when it comes to water quantity issues. You know, we're not feeling this. We're not feeling like water quantity is an issue. In, you know, and I, I thought that was a really good comment that, you know, once we are in crisis, crisis mode, then we have to act. But we should really be thinking about, you know, with more demands, especially on our groundwater. You know, we should maybe be thinking about prevention and, and planning more in, in that direction too. That stood out for me. I thought that was really interesting. And just the idea of, you know, thinking about the challenges that are going to come with rural development, which that kind of aligned with the kickoff meeting and what some of the comments that we heard from the commissioners at that meeting as well. So that's what I really wanted to point out and share, at least in that memo. And I don't know, does anybody have any comments about the the actual summary document that went along with this memo?
No comments, but um, quick question for you. The, so the last time, because you were saying just differences you saw from the last time. The last time would have been the last plan, right?
Yes.
Ten years ago. Okay. I'm just getting a frame of reference from time.
I'm not hearing anything. So just, you know, my next steps, like I had mentioned with the milestones, is that we'll take all this information and shape it into issue statements. Maybe some will stay the same. We might see new ones and then work on creating kind of draft goals. And present that at the January WPC meeting.
One thing I would add, Madam Chair and Commissioners, Melissa, thank you. It was a very thorough summary, and you put a lot into that, is something for the WPC to keep in mind is, you know, staff takes in all this data and, you know, we disseminate it as best we can. And then we summarize it as best, we summarize it as best we can, and we disseminated it as best we can for you. But things to keep in mind is that this is what we're generally hearing from the residents, your neighbors, as to what they feel are important, but that doesn't necessarily lean towards what you will want to guide us to do. Or you will have to help prioritize how we address these things. So, for example, obviously, selling groundwater, that's kind of a big issue right now. That may be something that is very important in the county area right now. But it might not be something you necessarily want the WMO to lead. It may be something that is really best for the county to lead, the county's natural resources department, which actually we, we are also the staff of that, but it is, it is a different agency. Or is it something that you really do want the WMO to kind of help lead? You know, that's a really good example. Another one, like Melissa said, is, is AIS. You know, we're definitely hearing more about it. And we're getting more input from residents that it is of value. So what exactly do you want the WMO's role to be in that issue? Is it something, again, that you really think the WMO could really lead these specific things, studies and summaries and inventories? Or do you want the WMO doing more treatments? Or do you want the county area to lead those more, so we can get more from the state? And have the WMO continue to just provide a strong supporting role? So as you kind of take these things in and you digest them, just kind of realize that that's kind of what we're going to be coming back to you for. That yes, we're hearing this information from your neighbors and the citizens of the WMO. But now how do you want us to address this moving forward?
And one thing I just wanted to point out, which I thought was really interesting too, on this page forty one of these infographics. So these infographics were all the results of the online survey to, to the general public. Question number thirteen, I found really interesting is that people are in support of more regulations on development and more regulations to protect water quality. So what does that look like? I don't know, but I just found that interesting because I think in the last plan update, people weren't in favor of more regulations, but now they are. So that was just another.
Change the fact that the WMO is still a non permitting entity. So no matter what, we would never create regulations where we didn't, but we won't, we won't permit where we didn't permit before. But we might put more language in our standards if, if that's what you decide you would want us to do. Moving forward.
Okay. Was this what you wanted to cover on this? Any other? Anything else?
Nothing for me, Madam Chair.
Okay.
Madam Chair, this is Commissioner Pinch. I can't go on without acknowledging the excellent job that Melissa did in putting together. She's been working on this for quite a while. Very, very important for our organization to do these community outreach kind of projects, et cetera. And the presentation here was excellent. So thank you very much, Melissa.
Thank you, Commissioner Pinch. I really appreciate that.
Any other comments, questions for?
I'd also like to thank Melissa for her work. She and I crossed paths many times when I was on the Cedar Lake Improvement District Board too. So I can really appreciate all the hard work she, she puts into this stuff. So thank you so much.
Thank you, Commissioner Casilius. I appreciate that.
Okay, well, thanks so much, Melissa. And I think we can move on to our next item. Ryan with the cost share program.
Madam Chair, Commissioners, two things before I get started, just technical things. Commissioner Phil, I was getting some feedback from you. It's not like I don't want to hear from you, but I did mute you. So just as a heads up, if you need me to manually unmute you, I can, otherwise, but just wanted to pass that on to you. The other thing too.
I'm unmuted. I'm unmuted.
All right, now you're good. I was getting feedback before, so that's why I put you on mute, but I think we'll be.
Oh, sorry about that. Okay.
Second thing, we've got a participant, and it might be Commissioner Tom Wolf, that's listed as Spencer's iPad. I just want to make sure we know who it is, so we've got that in the minutes. So if you signed on under Spencer's iPad, just let us.
It is me. Yep.
Okay, perfect. All right, we'll put that in the minutes. Thank you, Commissioner. All right, well, let's get started into the cost share manual item. So we're at the point of the year where every year we look at our cost share policy manual and we adapt the program to meet the needs of our plans and also the residents. And luckily for us this year, we don't have a ton of major changes. This is an action item, and I'll reiterate it before I'm all done, but since this item was amended, I'm going to first just go through the, the items that we had that made it to the packet. And then I'll go through the amended items. But just keep that in mind for the motion, they want to put to motion the amended cost share policy manual. So once again, we met with staff and administrators of different watershed districts, WMOs in the county. I'm just kind of going through the, the changes that everyone wants to see. And if you recall, this policy manual goes countywide. And then if, you know, one entity didn't want to change, they can obviously have that in their appendices. So you'll notice the WMO has, you know, kind of their different policies to the other WDs and WMOs as well on the back end of the policy manual. So we'll go through everyone. I just have a few bullet items here to go through, just to kind of let you know of some of the bigger changes that we had. One, this one actually comes from Commissioner Schmidt. So thank you. This is a, a great item to add to the policy manual. And that is requiring, requiring residue management projects to maintain previously enrolled acreage if they're applying for new acreage. So that means if you hypothetically applied for three years of residue management, and then after the three years are up, you want to apply for an additional three years on new acreage. You have to maintain the previously enrolled acreage as well as then enrolling the new acreage in. So it should help, you know, that, that's really kind of the goal of that practice is, is the long term success of it. And so I think that, that should help maintaining the old acreage. Another item, we just wanted to clarify that there is the potential of floodplain permitting that may be needed in certain circumstances for projects. So related to an item that had come up this year. And so obviously the projects have to follow all requirements, but we just wanted to further clarify that in the actual policy manual as well. So it's very clear. Next item, pretreatment may be needed for urban stormwater projects. And that would be as determined by the funding authority. So if we get urban stormwater BMP projects that come in, then in, in the instance, that would be in the WMO, we would then look at whether pretreatment would be needed for that project or not. So it's on a, a project by project basis in terms of that. Another item is allowing trees to be planted in our conservation cover project. So conservation cover is actually our native grasses. So allowing not to exceed ten percent of the acreage enrolled, to allow that to be trees. We felt as though landowners that are putting some amount of trees in their native grasses are less likely to, to probably take that out after the term is over. So hopefully this is then extending, you know, any, any projects that we that we fund, that they choose to put these trees in, that hopefully they would keep it beyond the, the term once it expires. So hopefully it's helping us longer term. Clarification on which projects go to the screening committee or not. So if you remember last year, we actually held wetland restorations and stream banks based off of the cost benefit rather than just a blanket statement, they all have to go to the screening committee. And we found there was one sentence in our appendices that still made it appear as though those were supposed to go to the screening committee. So we just basically clarified that. So those projects will be based off of, on merit for their environmental benefits and whether they'll come to the screening committee. Last item here, we separated out bioengineering and structural stream bank projects. And then also increased the rate for bioengineering to ninety percent. So they're very different. The two structural stream bank projects are quite a bit more expensive than bioengineering ones. So we wanted to separate out those two. And then offer a higher rate for bioengineering, because if it is possible to, to do the project with bioengineering, that would actually lessen our costs. So increasing the rate, you should, should still get a cheaper project than whether it's a structural project. So with that, I'll first see if there's any questions on those items. And if not, then I'll get into the 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 new stuff. All right. Commissioner Phil, I was getting some feedback from you there again. So I did, sorry, I muted you one more time. I'll unmute you, unmute you at the end of this, so you can then put in your, your motion or your vote. So the, the, I'll first start out with high level of what the, the change is for that came last minute and why that happened. So and Troy can interject at any point because he's kind of in the middle person with Bowser on this kind of last minute change that we're looking at. So Bowser is offering the potential of grant funds for incentives. And which historically has not always been the case. And so in our policy manual, if you remember a number of years ago, we did offer what we termed to be an incentive. And that led to some back and forth as, as to whether that was actually eligible or not. And so if you recall, we actually changed the language to go from incentive to what we call flat rate. Kind of, you know, really at the end of the day, a lot of the same things. It's just has a different name to it. And, and that allowed us to still use those Bowser funds on our projects that were utilizing flat rate funds. Your conservation cover, tree shrub establishment, cover crops, all those where, you know, quote unquote, it's looked at as an incentive essentially to to enroll your land into this program. And so on Friday, after the packet came out, Troy got word of this potential opportunity to utilize grant funds from Bowser to add to our program as an incentive. So now they would allow for that. However, you, we would have to have that language in the policy manual for it to qualify. So it's sort of a last minute, if we want to utilize these funds in twenty twenty five. If we want to utilize these funds in twenty twenty-five, we would have to make these changes. So at the end of the day, the the change, albeit looks like a lot of strike through and underline in the actual document, and I'll show you if you'd like all the places we're proposing that ch- those changes. But it's really just because we use the term flat rate so frequently in the policy manual. And now we're having to change that language to basically, you know, is it still a flat rate? Is it incentive? So it it looks like a lot, but Troy and I have been kind of talking through this today. And um, and we're we're on the same page. It's it's really not. It doesn't amount to a a ton of difference. Um, where there is a slight amount of difference um, is where we identify the actual rates that uh applicant is eligible for tree and shrub establishment and conservation cover. Troy was kind enough to go through and he created some spreadsheets, which I certainly can make available if anyone wants to look at them during the meeting here. Um, but the 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 gist of it is that when switching over to this incentive from flat rate, we're talking, you know, potential changes in the, you know, cents, um, dollars, teens of dollars, not not much. The highest one um, where it would change is the example would be if somebody is signing up for our native grass program and also the CRP program. And it's a larger acreage, the biggest difference in the the rental rate would be about forty-four-ish dollars uh, per acre. That's the biggest one. Uh, most of them are in that dollar, you know, in the teens, something very, very minor. Um, there and there's actually some instances where we would save uh, money by going this route. So it's a lot of information I'm I'm throwing at you, but basically what it is, is if we want to utilize these grant funds, um, which would then lessen our local dollars for um, those two practices, cover crops and tree and shrub establishment. Uh, we would need to adopt this this new language. And I'll stop there and I'll see if anyone wants me to actually go through each of the um, line items and or the spreadsheet that shows the difference in dollar values. And the last thing I'll add to the dollar values is we can still use grant funds to cover that difference. So if we want to not have an increase to WMO funds, we can actually utilize grant dollars to cover that difference. The the biggest one being the forty-four dollars per acre example I gave. So a lot of information, I'll stop. If anyone wants me to share it, um, speak up and let me know if you want me to look at both or just the language or just the spreadsheet.
Do we have a preference, Commissioners?
Madam Chair, this is Commissioner Pint. Um, Ryan, no, I think you did a good job explaining it. So I don't think we need to look at individual items. I think it makes sense. If we can utilize Bowser money um, in terms of some of the grant money, uh, I think we should do that. So I would go ahead and move forward with the changes that that affects that. So, thank you.
Thank you. Yep, and that is my opinion too. So, but I wanna give it another minute here, just a few seconds. Anybody else want to see those comparisons? Spreadsheets. Sounds like we're good.
And then I'll just reiterate one more time, Madam Chair, that uh, we would want the motion to be amending, approving, or recommending the approval for the amended cost share policy manual.
And this was the change that we referenced earlier, right?
Correct.
To the agenda. Okay, I just wanted to make sure that it wasn't another item after this. Okay.
Nope, Madam Chair, Commissioners, uh, be- because the tax docket that was included in the packet obviously did not include these changes. These changes just came out today. We have to ask for the amendment because there's now a different attachment that was uh, included. Um, I also do want to also thank uh, Troy uh, deeply for all the work he must have put cramming this out in probably forty-eight hours. Um, as Ryan said, he got it Friday and we're meeting right now. So I can only imagine how much work Troy spent over the weekend doing this. So we appreciate it. Troy, thank you very much.
You're certainly welcome, and I appreciate you accommodating this change at last minute. I, like you, I I do not like bringing these last minute changes, but I got this information on Thursday at three thirty, so it was just um, just kind of a mad rush, and I appreciate Ryan's help on it as well. I I think it's a good change. It's not that big of a change in the outcome, but it certainly allows us to access funds. So I think it's a, it's a good way to move forward.
Right.
Thank you.
Yeah, if we did nothing, nothing, nothing would change. We, I mean, nothing would affect our program. We'd still have the same money, the same funds, et cetera, et cetera. But if we update our language, uh, it does allow us to access an additional potential source of grants. So it seems worth it.
Oh, for sure. Yeah, I'm glad you guys were able to to get that incorporated in. So okay, questions first, or other comments from Commissioners? If not, do we have a motion to recommend approval to the board for the amended um, cost share program as presented today?
Madam Chair, this is Commissioner Pint. Um, yes, I, clarification first, are we able to approve this? Are we going to just recommend this to the SWOMO for approval?
Madam Chair, Commissioner Pint, so it would be a recommendation to the uh, WMO board.
Yeah, thank you. Alright, in that case, then I would make a motion that the Watership Planning Commission recommends to the SWOMO approval of the amended financial assistance uh, program policy manual, otherwise known as docket, as presented to us today.
Perfect. Do we have a second?
This is Commissioner Phillips. So second to the motion.
I'll do roll. Commissioner Weaver?
Hi.
Commissioner Pint?
Hi.
Commissioner Casilius?
Hi.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Hi.
Commissioner Phil?
Thank you.
Commissioner Phil?
Um, so
Hi.
Thank you, Commissioner Phil, and Commissioner Phillips.
Hi.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Alright, that motion has passed. Thanks again for your hard work on this, Ryan, and Troy with uh, the last minute changes too. Um, last one up, uh, do we have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
It's Commissioner Phillips. I'll make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
And do we have a second?
This is Commissioner Casilius. I'll second that motion.
Right.
And I will do roll Commissioners. Commissioner Weaver?
Hi.
Commissioner Pint?
Hi.
Commissioner Casilius?
Hi.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Hi.
Commissioner Phil?
Hi.
And Commissioner Phillips?
Hi.
Thank you very much, Commissioners, and have a wonderful Thanksgiving weekend.
You as well. Thanks, everybody.
You too.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You're on.